Tonight, and I think I just looked really quickly, but I think we have KJ Adibia and also the Daddy World and anybody else we have for the media, we want to welcome you also from the public. We want to welcome you. This is a workshop, not a regularly scheduled city council meeting, which will be held this coming Tuesday at six o'clock. If you have joined us, just know that if you lose it, you can always get, if you lose the coordinates to get on Zoom, you can always go to our new city website page at hwh.ar.gov, hwh.ar.gov and go to our government tab and scroll down and you'll find the, how to get onto our Zoom meetings, but also know that it's always the same. So you can, if you got on there tonight, you'll be, should be able to use the same thing in the future and we want to welcome you. I didn't want to say something that I was remiss and I didn't know some of this actually until today, but sure get it right. Want to of course acknowledge that we lost, we've recently lost two employees, Cedric Pride, Reverend Cedric Pride, who worked for our street department and until he got sick and was on family medical leave. And we, we, the visitation and funeral for him has already occurred and it was a moving, a moving experience for me. He's a good friend of mine. And I also want to mark the loss Rory Hawkins, who was also worked for our street department and ran our heavy equipment. He's the guy that knocked down the houses, cleaned up the lots. He was a very valuable employee and we hate to lose him, but I wanted to announce that the visitation for Roy will be tomorrow, Friday from four to six PM at Brown's Funeral Home on Walnut Street, four to six PM tomorrow. And the funeral for Roy is scheduled for Saturday at 2:00 PM at the PLM and D Center at Helen Crossing, 2:00 PM Saturday at PLM and D Center at Helen Crossing. And we're gonna miss Roy. We already missed Roy and Cedric both and they're big losses. And so we just, I just wanted to mark that and say that we value all of our city employees and their dedication to our, to our community. So having said that, tonight, we're going to pick up where we are on the budget and allow, I'm not really going to, I'm going to stay on and available for questions. I'm not going to go anywhere, but I'm gonna recognize Derek Turner, our city treasurer, to pick up where the council left off. And for those not aware, the mayor submits a budget by law, but the council is constantly, constitutionally responsible for passing the city's budget. So that's the purpose of these workshops. The treasurer goes through the budget, answers questions and so forth. And we have until February 1st to pass the budget for 2021. And having said that, Derek, I'm gonna turn it over to you and we'll pick up where we left off and go from there. Derek, take your computer off mute.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not sure exactly where we left off. I'm not sure if we did the street department yet. I just had a couple of questions that I'd like to pass on to Mr. Ethel. He did a great job last week of going through the each budget and going through the line items and addressing the concerns that he and the other council members may have had. But one of, one thing I want to clarify with the council or ask about is that in the sanitation and the street department, we had two foremen who are now forming in the base pay ordinance. And it was, a request was made to change those positions to a deputy directors and a landfill position. The landfill general manager, they asked me to change that to a deputy director position and make each one of those salaries $45,000. But technically those positions are, aren't called that, those things in the base pay ordinance. So they're forming in the, in the base pay ordinance and there's a general landfill manager in the base pay ordinance. So technically to have those in the budget under the title, I'm not sure, maybe the city treasurer can give us some, some, some insight on that, but it's my understanding that those titles would have to match. And so I'm asking the council, how do they want me? I'm thinking that the count, the titles need to be what they are in the base pay ordinance. But in the budget right now, I was asked to change those to deputy directors. So I'm not sure if something needs to be changed. If they want to leave them at deputy directors, does that need to be changed in the base pay ordinance? Or do those positions need to be changed to what we had them at first as the general landfill director and a foreman in each department, each, one foreman in the street department and one foreman in the sanitation department?
If I didn't say earlier, it's, it's just a workshop. So just speak, Mr. Turner will take direction from there and help coordinate the discussion.
And my understanding is if they're left at, at the current titles, they won't be, technically they won't be funded. Is Andre on the line?
I don't, I don't see him, but I need a, I need a, well, he, yeah, he's, he's here, he's here. The, the base pay and, and, and the, the titles and the, and the base pay need to match up for sure. I guess I think, I think what you're asking is what should the titles be?
Yes. Well, I'm thinking they, I'm thinking they should be what's in the base pay, but I was directed to change them to what we were proposing to change them to. So I'm asking, do you want me to change it back to what's in, in the actual base, the titles that are actually in the base pay?
I know that sounds simple, but I need a visual. Should we have that in an email somewhere?
Yeah, I think I sent it to you. Let me check this. Salaries and benefits worksheet and let me look at it right quick. And I'm pretty sure I sent you a copy of it, but I can send it to you.
Hold on just a second. I'm trying to, I'm looking at, I'm checking my box. I know you sent us one the other day.
Okay.
But I would, I would like to look at them side by side. Okay. So Tuesday, we got the salaries and benefits variance and
that, that was just, that was the total of the departments. If you look at, I sent you something on the day after the last, let me see. That meeting, I sent it to you on the 13th. Let me see if I can pull it up. So email, you got something on the 13th. And when you get, when you open, get a chance to open it up on a page five in the sanitation department, you have a deputy director listed at forty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That position is actually a foreman in the base pay.
You said page five?
Yeah, page five and then salaries and benefits worksheet.
Okay. Now, help me out here. Are you saying that this, this does or does not match base pay?
It does not match. Base pay has those positions as a foreman in the street department, a foreman in the sanitation department. And they, yeah, the general manager.
The old, the old structure. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You're asking, Mr. Jones in Columbia, you're asking us if they should be the same, they should be the same.
I guess what I'm asking, Mr. San Columbia is are they going to change it in the base pay? I guess that's basically what I'm, are they going to change those positions in the base pay to match this in the budget?
Well, they need to match. They have to match.
So I guess my question is which one are you going to change? You're going to change the base pay or are you going to change but?
What should be simplest to do?
If the budget is, if, if, if the, if the budget has the money in it, right, would you change the base pay so it can match the budget?
But you guys haven't actually created those positions.
I, I think that the, the need to reflect whatever the base pay position says, because base pay consideration of budget separate funds, you all were going through trying to determine, you're all going through trying to determine what exactly you all were going to do on those positions as it relates to a department of public works and you hadn't finalized that department upon public works. So until there's a part of the public works, it should reflect what our position says in the base pay.
Okay. I'm sorry for not asking that question correctly. Taking a long way of asking that question, but I was trying to, you know, be a little bit more clarifying, but yeah.
So unless, until there's a change in the department of public works, they should still say what they, what their form position was. You haven't changed them to deputy directors as of yet.
Okay. And the only other thing that I have, and like I said, I can't remember where we left off it with, if we had completed street department or not. I think they, I got a request from Mr. Jones about giving one of the operators at the landfill, I think a $2 raise from thirteen, $15, but they were considering doing it. And so they would like to at least have it in the budget before they presented you guys with the actual increase in pay. But they would like to have it in the budget. So it would already be in the budget when they came before the council to, to get this added to whichever this operator's pay is. That's going, that's going into the budgetary portion of the workshop.
Are these operators that handle the heavy equipment?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they need to be paid $15.
But this is just one, I think this was in for one particular operator. Like I said, I was just requesting to have it in the budget. And I guess they will come to you when they actually want to get, give that increase in pay. They have to come before you, before they get that increase in pay.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
We, you know, this Chris Franklin, we had talked about, we would just go just throw out we would just go throw out $2 raises and stuff like that. I'm pretty sure has, has this person been with us long enough? Have they been evaluated? Issue, Mr. Joe knows the policy. So I don't know, I don't know if the person been here, how long they been here. Have they been evaluated? It goes from the department head to the mayor. And the mayor presents it to us and say, hey, listen, this person has been here past the days, you know, because we, we had a thing, we would get out $2 here, $2 there. I don't know if this is a new employee, I don't know if this employee has been here. I understand what you're saying, put the money in the budget. But we put stuff there, we, we put stuff in the budget, people feel like that's their money. So
Trying to clarify it too. I understand it may be putting the cart before the horse a little bit, but that's just, I'm just forwarding that request. I guess it wouldn't matter if they, if you did it at that particular time when they came to ask for the actual increase. But I just, they asked me to ask, yeah, they asked me to ask and I'm asking you guys.
I mean, yes, sir. But that, that should go to the, the, Mr. Joe, the department head should talk with the mayor. And if the mayor, because he, I mean, how, how did they get the number to $2? I mean, you know, that's one of the things we've been having and I'm not trying to say you, what nobody's done, but how can you clarify, justify $2? You, if you, I'm just saying, let me see, he's fine with it, but having been there long enough, what, what does the evaluation say? Because that's how other departments come in and say, give me $2. You gave this person $2. And when we talk about that, it should be, the department heads talked to the mayor. The mayor did discuss, well, I did an evaluation. I, I said, we're going to send it by a cent, fifty cent, a dollar, you know. What, what, I mean, what, I mean, that's the thing. How do we just jump up and say, oh, boom, you get $2? See that, that's, that kind of makes you, but when we're doing the budget, you're offline because you gave this person $2. Then you, it's a known what you asked for. So everybody's going to start to go rate at $2. Then next month, I'll say, well, can I get $3? So we're doing, I mean, that's just me. We need to have some evaluation in place of not knocking the person, but before we, before I could give somebody that right there, they need to, you know, we have a chain. The, you know, like the mayor said, the, the, he presents a budget, it comes to us to, to fund it. They should go, go to the mayor and have it laying out. So we can say, okay, this is one of the $2s for.
Okay.
I just want to say that's like beating a dead horse. I have said the same thing for five years. If we did incremental annual raises, we wouldn't have people that just get raises when the minimum wage increase. And then someone comes and hires the next day and they make the same amount. So, you know, I don't know where it's going to go ahead and go on anywhere in four or five years.
It is for you absolutely right, because you know, we, we have, we have an employee who I haven't seen, well, the mayor, I had talked to the mayor about it. But we have an employee who worked for the city for 20 years and she, she makes $10 an hour, whereas it's been ways with her. She probably get 11 now. But how do you work for a, 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 a company for 20 years and you only make $10? So I've been saying since I've been here, the department, we need to have some form of evaluations. Every employee should be evaluated. If, whatever their anniversary date is, that's what, that's what they, that's what they should be evaluating. To say, hey, are you exceeded or, or, or you, you lost support or, or check your attendance, check all these things before you give people these kind of raises. I mean, are they late? Are they on time for their job? Have you had to, you know, what, what's the, have you ever had to discipline them? All those things goes into play. Instead of saying, you know, I reward the good and the bad. If you're a bad employee, get it done.
Okay.
Hello?
And can I ask another question? And this is dealing with the landfill as well. And I'd like to pretty much ask the city attorney, if he's still on the line. And it's, it's dealing with the budget comparison to the base pay ordinance. And so you have a position, the general manager position in the land, in the landfill and the base pay, that position is $50,000 in the base pay. And the budget, I was asked to reduce it to 45,000. Does that matter if you have conflicting amounts in the budget versus the base pay? It doesn't look like he's on the, on the call right now. So I can come back with that, but that's just, that's just a question I have for clarification. Unless, like, he's an attorney. I don't know if he wants to answer the, oh, okay. I see Andre back on.
What's the question?
I was, I was asking that you had issue with the, the landfill general director was requested that that salary moved down to 45 from 50, but 50, do, do they, does that need to correlate? Because you have the base pay incentive, that person gets at least 50,000, but you have a budget with the base pay ordinance is, is required.
I think what you're asking is, is, and can that line item be a 45 if base pay says it's a 50?
I mean, yeah, yeah.
No.
Okay.
Or the base pay ordinance would have to admit to, to change it to 45. Otherwise it's, it's already set.
Okay.
See?
I'm sorry, I, I thought you, I thought you heard, I was, I was directing it to you.
I keep getting kicked out. I've been kicked out three times. I don't know why my line keep getting kicked out, but the base pay would be controlling, it seemed like the, the, what you were asking about. Base pay says the minimum salary would be paid. It is the base salary. And so if the salary is 50,000, that will begin and, and the budget can't reduce it below because it's starting.
You, 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 you kicked out again, but I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Just to make the budget the minimum what the base pay is saying.
Right. But I, I think the more important thing is that as we keep talking about base pay and a, and a budget, it may not be, it may not serve our purpose. Well, we probably need to, to just work on our budget. And then if we need amendments to base pay, whether it be titling of positions or whatever, we, we can go back and do that.
Okay.
That's not, that's not something that has a time limitation on it. So the positions can be filled, but they would need to be filled in accordance with what's on the books now, which is our most recent base pay ordinance. And I know we've had discussions about solidating departments. As we start to consider changing base pay, that's what really, what we're really consolidating departments. There may be more questions about how it actually works and who's going to do this and who's going to do that. So perhaps we need to just work on the, the numbers at this point as, as they exist right now, because I guess people already perform the job duties and responsibilities. So we can just go ahead and do our operations for 21 and then we can talk about restructuring in the base pay one instead of different time. That's just my thing.
Well, I mean, those questions were just trying to make sure that we didn't have conflicting information in the base payment budget. So I just wanted them to be, you know, jazzed up.
Right. They, they, they have to be harmonized at some point, but we don't have to necessarily, we don't have to necessarily attack that all the, and, and base pay all at once. The, the budget is the primary goal for us to get completed at this point.
Right. I agree with that. Budget funds the job and we can change the base pay later. We need to get the budget passed.
Okay. Now, Mr. Ethel, if you want to, you know, like I said, you did a great job last week. You want to go on and kind of go through the, the other two departments like you did the last time?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I think we ended on street, if my memory serves me correct.
I don't know if we ended, if we started and then ended, or did we finish? That's what I was kind of unsure about.
You know what? I think we, I think we actually finished street because my recollection is that we had landfill and water
left.
That remain. So we can start with landfill and I, I'll just solicit questions or comments like we did last time. Landfill starts on page 17 of the proposed budget. If you have yours in front of you, it starts on page 17 and we didn't take it from there. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the landfill proposed budget?
I have no questions.
I have some, some questions for, for the treasurer. And these are small items in, in regard to, you know, relative to the entire budget. But if you take a look on page 18, we have rentals and leases. Can you tell us what, what specific equipment that encompasses?
Now, I'm looking on my Excel spreadsheet, but you're talking about the landfill, right?
Yes.
Okay. You have rentals and leasing, you have rental equipment, $9,000?
That's correct.
Okay. What's going on with the pumps, pumping the lichee out of the landfill? Most of that is pumps. We've had in the past, we've rented equipment when they were building the sale. So we would leave, we would rent dunk trucks and other equipment. But that, I think that sale is either completed or pretty close to being completed or finalized. And so a lot of the equipment rentals lately have been with pumps to pump the excess lichee out.
Okay. So does 92, 32, 36 represent what we actually spent in 2020?
Let me look at my formula. Yeah. What, what it looks like when I took this, I took the, the, what amount was in that line item in November? And I projected it out for a full year. So in November, it was like 8,000 little, about $8,400. And so I projected it out to about 9,200. So as of 2022, we spent, and through November, we spent nine, that 8,8,463 dollars in that line item.
Okay. Different question. Why we have 85,000 in repairs and of equi- was like, I guess that's based on 2020, but was that exceptional or is that normal?
The, that is less actually. And November of last year, it was 193,000. And we had paid some old bills from power equipment. Now I talked to Mr. Jones and the mayor and had recent conversations with the, the newly hired general manager. And we think we can get repair costs down significantly. We've had some equipment that has been repaired. You know, you guys approved the repair of the excavator, the compact, I'm not sure. We just approved it. We just had a new motor put in one. And so we think we're going to get those costs down, but actually the cost in 2020 through November was 193,000.
And so 85.
Yeah, yeah. We, they think we sat down and talked to them and they think that they can get it down. So maybe that's just wishful thinking, but right now they think, like I said, we resolved that issue with power equipment. We paid them guys off and we looked for, we started getting another company to do those repairs for us and those repairs have been a lot less than they had been in the past.
Does anybody else have any questions about landfill? Going once, going twice. Then we can move on to
Don, don't.
Oh, hold on. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Crock?
Okay, because I don't have my budget right here, but on the, whatever, the, 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 the job that was just filled, that for the 50,000, what is it in the budget now? The proposed budget?
I'm just
About 45.
Okay. Different document for me. Okay. That's a different document for me. Are you saying that's what it is in the proposed budget?
Yeah, that's the, that's the budget that you guys, uh, uh, look on in that salary benefits worksheet.
Right.
Got sent you the other day on page um, three. Has, and it still had the old title deputy director and it has forty-five thousand.
That's the position that would have been as well as fifty in base pay and forty-five in the proposed budget.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, it was asked, request, you know, we, in one of the budget workshops, it was requested that we moved it down to forty-five. But like I stated earlier, I just wanted to make sure that, like you said, we had harmony between the base pay and the budget. So we have clarified that issue.
Ms. Crockett, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions about landfill and any issues that need to be addressed? Or can we move on to the last department that we haven't talked about, which is going to be water? I assume that, I assume that means we can move on to water. So water starts on uh, it's gonna start on page, 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 where it appears in two different spots. After tourism. Page twenty-four, I believe. If you have your budget.
Now, I, I, before you get, guys get started, uh, I'd like to state that, uh, talk, talk to the mayor. I don't know if he's talked to the general manager in the water department or not. Uh, but we had proposed, of course, you know, we had proposed a three percent cost of living increase, right? But we had also, we were also looking into uh, paying the water department personnel for licenses or certificates, whatever. To give them and to increase their pay and to give them incentive to, you know, to get training and to uh, learn more about their jobs. Uh, under uh, the city attorney had did some sort of proposed uh, ordinance. I don't know if you guys ever, I don't know if it ever got to the city council or not, but the city attorney had uh, created this ordinance that would uh, reward the people in the water department uh, for gaining licenses and certificates, whatever. But when I looked at it, I kind of wanted a little bit more detail, to be a little bit more specific about which particular license. And uh, I don't know if it had the exact amount of each license, but I, I think I wanted to have a little bit more detail. But uh, so the city attorney had created some ordinance that would give the water department personnel an increase in pay based on the licenses and certificates that they had. And uh, so I, I don't know if he forwarded that to you. I don't know when he did it. And so that's part of some of the things that we had proposed to do inside the water department. That's before you get started talking about salaries, uh, salaries and ways. Yes, Mr. Val.
Yeah, we were, we had met with Mr. Caria. Mr. Caria was supposed to give us a way in on the, the specifics. Uh, what we had discussed was simply a skeleton. We hadn't discussed all the specific details because we went need a guidance from the water department personnel uh, and the mayor as to uh, what was the amount we're looking for uh, relating to licenses. Because one of the things that we should consider, uh, I would ask the city council considering leading to all departments is when a person achieves a certain license, uh, then this is automatic that this, this pay incentive is tied to it. Uh, some cities I've been researching, what they do is they give a uh, instead of making a salary, they give annual stipend. We give you this for possessing a license. Mr. Turner and I discussed that as well. Uh, but there, there's many different ways that it could be done. But the question is, what is the preference of the city council as to leading to uh, giving people incentive to obtain the proper licenses as well as uh, whether it's a whether it's part of their salary or as part of you possessing this license, which is paying you annually for you to have this license. Uh, however the council want to do it, we can look at how to do it and, and uh, to make sure it comply with the law. So I've, I've had several conversations with Turner about that, excuse me, and the mayor, as well as Mr. Caria. All those conversations were separate. We haven't had a joint meeting. Uh, but that's, that's where we are on the issue, which is I think the thing we have across every department is you want to make sure the jobs are uh, the, the most attractive that you can afford to make them within the department. And so that you can retain people and attract those individuals who are qualified.
And, and can I add that, that one of my reasons for bringing that up was so that they would be aware that even though it's gonna take, you know, it may, it's gonna take a little bit longer time to kind of uh, hammer out exactly how that's gonna be done within that department, particular department. But I kind of want those guys to know that, that we were in the process. We had discussed it. We, like Andre said, we had discussed with the city attorney, with the general manager. As a matter of fact, I talked with him today. We've had discussions with the mayor as well. And so we will kind of want to let, I know sometimes the water department feels like they're left out and we don't discuss them a lot. But we have been over the past several months, few months in a way, uh, been in discussions about how to get those guys some additional uh, income as well. So I just wanted to let the council know that we had been um, looking into those items uh, in regards to getting paid to the water department. And so I just wanted to add that before you guys really went into discussion about the water department.
Okay, um, this may be, be backtracking, but i- if, if we adopt that approach, we probably need to consider it with landfill too, since you have people who who are required to have licenses over landfill. And we want to ensure that we have enough people at landfill. I would think we want to ensure that we have enough people who are qualified to keep our landfill and perhaps provide some encouragement for them to do so. Uh, that's just side note. So perhaps we need to um, address that at some point.
And a sad note, that's, that's a sad note about landfill. You guys, I don't, it's just hasn't been formalized, but you guys actually did, maybe twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, somewhere back then, when you decided to you changed the base pay, you, you left some room in the base pay to pay someone between thirteen and fifteen, I think, or fifteen, seventeen, or whatever it was, depending on experience. And you did leave, you, you, you kind of left that option open, but you just didn't formalize it in the, in the, in any other kind of pace. But you kind of did tech, kind of did approve it a little bit without just formalizing.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Ford.
I, I agree. I think it should be across all departments. And that thirteen to fifteen, if it serves my memory correct, is that we put that in place because when people get licenses, we were going to upgrade them for each license. I think it was A, B, and C. I think our employees, they, they become more valuable to us when they have a license.
Yes, ma'am. When we started that process and we just didn't finish it. So I guess some point during this year, we and like Mr. Ethel suggests, we can go and formalize that a little bit more and just finish that process.
Right. But that was started under uh, Hollowells.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I, I think we did that several, several years ago. That was done uh, to provide an incentive for the employees.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I believe it was discussed, but was never finished is what, what Mr. Turner are talking about. We discussed this several times. We, we kicked this can around. Uh, but it's never been formally made the actual policy of the city. And that's what Mr. Turner is discussing is the formalization of the policy and the finalization of the same. So that uh, whether it's just the water and landfill, or whether it's all departments, how, how we, what is going to be our approach uh, relating to, to that.
I thought we, I thought we made it for all departments back when uh, Jay was the mayor. I, I thought we did that.
Mr. Turner and I suggested that you all do that, but I, I don't think you ever adopted it as policy.
Well, we did. It needs to be a policy of the city that when they earn.
It's in the base pay and you corrected it for the CDL draft. So we've been doing a piecemeal for this, this group of employees, that group of employees, that group of employees. We need to make sure we just cover all the departments. And so that may be a lengthy process. But I just wanted you guys to know before you started talking about the water department salaries and raises them. And I know that's what we're gonna, it's gonna lead into that, uh, that we had been in the process over the past few months trying to get some sort of structure set up for the water department. But they do need licenses and I think most of them are required to have at least a minimum of a, a A or a one or whatever it is. I think most of them have to have a minimum of some sort of license.
Hey, Mr. Turner, this is Chris Franklin. How you doing? Uh, you know, we had talked about, this is like with Mr. Jones was talking, well, and they tell him about his employees. We got people in the water department also who are uh, heavy equipment operators. We have, uh, you know, and I, I remember, you know, since we, do we, do we still, we have a meter reader in here. But you know, we don't have, our meterings are read like digital, right? Since we got.
Yeah, they drive by, have the uh, cellular.
So, so, so who does that?
I'm not assured of the employee that does it.
Because I'm, I'm still seeing somebody walk.
No, I think we have, I thought we, well, the mayor maybe can answer that. I don't know if Mr. Caria is on the line or not. But I thought we had.
Yeah, I'm, it's okay. I'm still seeing a person that comes by and read the meters. And what, you know, we got, we got somebody who does water waste sample, I mean, the water sampling. We have somebody who, you know, you know, you got a couple of positions in the budget and I always say be budget neutral. When we were talking about raises before for the water department, you know, you had uh, Mr. Caria's position has, has not been filled. Uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Jody's position had not been filled. It's a couple of positions in the budget has not been filled uh, in the water department. We had this big hooray a couple of years, a, a year or two ago about the water department. I was constantly seeing the, 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 the raises that they were asking for with those two salaries would make up for a raise and we didn't have to raise anything or didn't have to poke it around for some more money. But be back, back on to what we were talking about with the raises. I do think that, you know, the water department should be restructured. Uh, you got a maintenance, you got a, the lab. You got, what, what we need to do is get a lit, well, not we, I'm sorry. The mayor, the department head should do is get a list uh, and like rename whatever is in that department. If you got somebody who, you know, the guys who are maintenance, they should get paid a, a, a start, what's their starting salary? The guy, the guy who's the meter reader, they should have a starting salary. If you're the lab, I, it, it should be broken down anyway. Do, do the heavy equipment operators, should they have licenses? Uh, should they have, what should they have? It should be a scope of what should they have to getting a, a raise or that, or to obtain each, each license they obtain, it should be a set goal to get this, to get that. But with the whole department, it should be restructured because it has not been restructured since the city's combined. Am I right, Rob?
Yeah, you're right, Mr. Franklin. And that's what uh, Mr. Valley was discussing. Each department is gonna be different. And so we need to have something, you, you, you need to have a general uh, a general approach to it, but departmental specific. And so in general, we would, well, we want to uh, pay employees for attaining certain license in general. But specifically for each department, you know, we have to kind of designate which license. If you get this particular license, we will pay you this much for this. Uh, so it's not something that is general across the board, but it has to be departmental specific. And you can work on those to start to uh, develop the, the policies for each particular department.
Well, Mr. Turner, I have a suggestion. Why don't you and the mayor and the city attorney get together and uh, make a proposal to the council as to uh, what the, what you feel, this administration feels that it should be, and then we'll take it into consideration. And uh, we won't be kicking this thing down the street. So that's my recommendation.
Mrs. St. Columbia, I agree with you, but you forgot one person. Put the department head in there as well. I, I'm with you on that. The department head should be in there as well. So that he, cause he knows what his employees are doing.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. That is correct. Absolutely. Yes.
So I, I think that if we could get that, I mean, in the structure of the, of how you are gonna structure it, if we're getting it done. Yes, sir. If you could get it in a couple of days, so we can look at it and, you know, make sure that there's no waste. If you, if you got all your employees, okay, who's the, how many office managers you got? Do you got, I will have one office manager, held in West Helder. Yeah, one office manager, you're gonna have a site manager. People should know their roles in the water department. How many people you got in this office in Helder? How's, I mean, I, man, I'm not trying to step on the mayor's toes. I'm not trying to get involved in the day to day, oh, in the department. This one is the department head to the mayor and the city attorney to do it. See how's it structured, like if the water department closes at twelve o'clock or what, what, well, one person go to lunch at ten and somebody be there at twelve. So when people go to lunch, they can pay their water bill on both sides. And you know, if it's gonna be closed at four thirty, it's gonna be closed at four o'clock. It's gonna be closed, it'll go from eight in the morning to five in the evening. You know, or how many office staffs you have? Well, you have three people there. One person to be the rover. While, you know, so the other two people go to lunch or whatever on both sides. I mean, who, who handles the deposits, all these things that we worked out. What is your job title for the water department? Are you a secretary or are you a, a cashier or what, what, what is your, what is your job title? And, and man, that's why I'm asking you and Mr. Collins to, to get together. So you all can come up with those numbers or what you feel is comfortable for those people. Because I, see, we lost uh, an employee before. So we, we, the salary we was paying that person has decreased. So it's, it's a lot of savings in the water department. And I do see we have staff, uh, the maintenance staff up or the, the meter readers or whatever, we'll staff those up. So I just think we really need to just look at uh, the mayor needs to look at what the department needs and how to restructure the department. So we can fund it the way it should be funded.
Yeah, that's, that's basically, yeah. What we need to do is let you guys make the recommendation to the council. We don't, the council does not need to micromanage each department or tell who needs to get what raises. I think you all need to make the recommendation. Put it, uh, put it to where you come to us when it's time to do it.
And Mr. St. Columbia, I think, and then this is Mr. Franklin too. I'm trying to, and I guess one of the bad things, the reason I brought it up was just to convey to everybody that this isn't, you can't do this in a couple of days. This is something I want to kind of let the water department know that we do have a, we have suggested a cost of living increase. But all these other um, adjustments that we like to make, make, it's gonna take, you, we have to adopt the budget, well, the city council has to adopt the budget by February first. And I'm not, I don't think we can get all these paid, different pay structures established by February first. And so I guess that's what I'm trying to convey to everyone that these are things, let people know that we are actually looking at these things. We are working on them. These are things we, we've thought about. And so we're not blowing people off when they, we know everybody wants additional money. We know people want raises. We like to let them know that we are seriously thinking about these. There's something we think about.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
Derek, I got a question. It deals with you, your conversation and Mr. uh, Franklin's conversation. Uh, uh, for example, the water department, there was made a mention, made mention that uh, there was salary and budget neutral. Um, that someone's salary, uh, that you didn't have it. So what happens to that money that was allocated for that salary? Because it doesn't show up um, on the expenditure where it says revenue less expenditure. What happens to that salary when someone leaves the department early? Where does it go? Where does it show up at?
The appropriations, it's just gonna show up in um, the uh, budget variance, you know, how you compare to your, how your actual results compared to what you budgeted. So if you budgeted thirty thousand dollars for an employee and they only, and they left before they got thirty thousand dollars and in that particular line item, you would just have five thousand dollars in additional appropriations. So that's your, your budget, your budget to actual results show you how you uh, operated compared to what you planned, what, what your budget was. It shows how close you came to your uh, projections and, and your goals and whatever other things you planned on trying to do. It shows how close you came to your uh projections and, and your goals and whatever other things you planned on trying to do. Did I answer the question?
I got a question as well. Mayor, Mayor and Mr. Collier, how soon do y'all feel like y'all can get together? Because I mean, you know, each one of y'all know how many employees you got. Can y'all get, get enough time to get together, try to see how fast you all kind of restructure the department? And what it, which way y'all wanna go with this so we can kind of take care of that? If we could let you, you know, let you two work on how y'all would restructure the department. And how much, you know, it shows what y'all tried to do so we can know how can we, how we can appropriate. If you go restructure it, restructure it, do it fast, cause uh times of the essence. I mean, uh, this has not been the first time we've been saying that we was gonna restructure the water department. Uh, I know since it, since sometime it, I told him to do it. So I'll show you how fast y'all get to work with it so we can pass the numbers together.
Well, let me, let me go first and then I'll ask Mr. Collier to chime in. The, there, there are a lot of answers to all of that. The council, I think, has said for some time, probably even before I got here, that um we should tie. Uh, certifications to raises, or maybe I should say raises to certifications. Um, Chris Harris with Darkside Rural Water Association, y'all are familiar with. Has recommended. Um, that we do that also, trying to make this simple. And we have a list of people at the water department, employees who are interested in improving their certification. There are, are also minimum. Uh, health department standards that we're supposed to meet in terms of certification. So um, the certification issues, I think the most important issue. And I think we all agree on that probably at, at the water department. Um, time out to how much raises you get. Um, and also the state. Minimum requirements are what Chris Harris has been helping us on. And one of the requirements that Mr. Collier and I are gonna talk some more about are. Uh, in that certification process and license process is um. Basically to, to group. Employees together uh as they go through it with supervisors who um can be their mentors. And that, that's really the main thing I've been working on. As far as some of the other stuff, um, when I came in, we started, you know, we reopened during lunch for people to be able to pay bills. Um, COVID changed a lot of that um in terms of accessibility to the actual office. Um, but the hours and Mr. Carter, well, I, I guess Mr. Ross was there then, but you're, you know, you, you've inherited that. Um, but then COVID hit and so that's, that's changed the accessibility to the office some, or a lot. Um, in terms of the. Some of the uh, the funding looks good um for the water department. Of course, I've supported raises from the beginning, as many of you have. So what we have to do now is put pen to paper, especially on the certification issue, I think is the most critical one. And that, as far as the timing though, to go to your other question. I really think it's just, and I think Mr. Carter came by my office today and we missed, missed each other. But I think it's just a matter of doing what y'all have already said and all of us getting in the rain. And uh agreeing to what is minimum standards plus what is reasonable and what we can afford. In terms of promotions and raises and in, in certifications. And Mr. Carter, I'm gonna defer to you. Now, I will say also that the other goal is to continue the process of unifying the two sides. Mr. Carter. That, that began.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
You're okay, go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm gonna tell you what really has happened to the water company. And I said this earlier when we was in the meeting with Mr. Ross. You're all, the reason why the water company is lacking on uh. The employees having the, uh, the proper uh. Standards for his uh, uh, being competitive as far as uh their license and everything. It's because somebody dropped the ball on as far as where it was once where, once you got your license, then you got paid. Now, if the employees, employees that we have now would have been able to, to receive their license like they should have been doing, done. They would have been up to pay that they hadn't, that, that, that they would have been asking for now. So now, uh, we are in the process now trying to get those guys certified. Uh, we, uh, as you may have said, we've got, we're working with Mr. Chris with the Arkansas Rural Water. And he's involved, uh, got, we got some of the guys that involve uh in, in training. Uh, to get their license. Uh, the plan which Mr. Chris has is it's gonna take him up to two, two years to get a fif- up to fifteen dollars an hour. Which was, which is, is gonna be mandatory that the city pays these guys fifteen dollars an hour. In, in the next two years, once they get cer- get certified. Uh, you know, that, that's great. But there's gonna, of, of course, you know, there's gonna be some that has been working with us that's not gonna be able to, to pass those tests, they're not gonna be able to do it. So I, you know, uh. I, I, we doing our best to work with them because we, uh, I, I, I don't really have enough mentors with, you know, working time with them. But I'm, I'm doing my best to work with the guys because. E- everybody need to be able to have, make a, a good income. And, and that's what makes uh anybody, any person that's working for you to wanna do a good job is if he's getting paid. Uh, now, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm overspending. The issue is, is this. Now, we just got this raised uh minimum wage for eleven dollars an hour. I've got guys running the plant. For eleven dollars an hour. They've been doing this for years. So, you know. If, if we, if we, we've got to make sure that we do implement this, the, 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 the licensing. That these guys, they get them and, and, and it carries them to, to uh get the license. Uh, so that uh they can, can, can be of, of value to themselves and to us too. So I, I liked it. I like the project that we have that, that's going on and uh it can work. But in the meantime, uh, these guys, my guys are, are going, are going lacking. Because we got peoples in the police department, we got peoples in the fire department that making, they're getting theirs, but my guys are not getting theirs. So that's why they feel like they're going lacking. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad I have this opportunity to tell you that. I have a lot of guys that very, that they're encouraged on, on wanting to learn to get their licenses and stuff. So that's a good, that's a good job. As soon as the mayor and I get together. And, and can come up with a type of budget, I, 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 I was, I was, I would appreciate if the council would just. Uh, do their best to get, get my guys something. Because these guys have been working through this pandemic a- a- and actually out there working. Now, you had a question concerning uh. The operator, well, well, I guess we can discuss this with the mayor later on. But as far as why, the hell, the heavy equipment person, uh, get more money, whatever. That's no, that, that's in, in water. It doesn't matter because what happened is if they get their license. Then they would have, the, they would be up to the uh, uh, fifteen dollars an hour, whatever you wanna do. Now, that's the reason why the guys don't have, that they're driving equipment now, because they, they don't, they don't have the license. And uh, we got one that do have license and, and uh. If we just going on, give them their, what, what, what they do, in other words. They got, the ones that have license, give it to them if they do what they do now. A- 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 and, uh, we can, we can, we can, uh, when other workers, that we, I have a lot of new, new workers coming in. When they see that the city a- a- and, uh, uh, the mayor a- and, and I'm working. Trying to get them uh, 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 better pay, then I think we'll get uh better performance from them. But has anybody got any question?
Mr. Carter, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how's your evaluation process? Because like you say, you guys, the guys who've been there. Well, my first question, how many guys have their license? And have you evaluated those guys and submitted some form to the mayor to say that you like, uh, you know, cha- changed their pay? Uh, how, how, you know, how's their work habits? So it, it, when the mayor was saying, well, I got this person in the water department, will we go up from this to that? Well, it's justified that you have laid out, it, it, like, your employees have been there ninety days. I mean, they don't get that for that, they yearly evaluation. How, how much, how much would that, I would give, it would say, well, this is the person that did. I don't wanna evaluate, evaluate your employees yearly. So when the mayor decides at the end of the year, when it comes to trying to work on the budget, the mayor can say, hey, well. Mr. Carter, this is his recommendation and I support this because he has a little paper, this is what this guy has done, you know. You know, I know one of the guys that work in the water department. You know, that, he used to work in the str- in the street department tearing down houses. You know, you, you got some good guys over there that I know, you know, we got one guy who, who's uh running a plant. Uh, the, 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 testing the water, water sampling. Uh, he, he got a license, I'm pretty sure. Whoever has license, uh, down, submit it to the mayor. I, I'm pretty sure the mayor would look at it and if he, if he, if he comes to us and say, hey, well, Mr. Mr. Carter got four guys that got their license. They haven't been paid, I would rectify the road, I, I'll go along to help do whatever needs to be done because, you know, water is important. Is, is, well, well, water is important, that's all I can say about that. You know, and I wanna do my, my part to help.
Okay, well, that's all good. Uh, I hadn't submitted anything to the mayor because. Uh, as I said, when we was at the last meeting, you know, we wasn't getting paid for the license. So, I mean, I've got, you know, like I said, you have them that, that have, have got, and I, but I started encouraged, I, I. Ever since I've been there, I've been encouraging the guys to go ahead and get their license regardless if they got paid or not because it's a benefit to them.
How many guys have their license? How many people have their license? How many people have their license already?
Right now, uh, I only have in, in, in Helena, I only have. Uh, one in the, in the lab. Uh, one in, in, in the water department, one that does, does the water repair and drives heavy equipment. One. That's um, he, he, he's uh more so your uh, the, the guy that's on duty and reading meters and everything else. He has his license. So I, I only have three guys in Helena that has license. Some type of.
Well, how about this, Mr. Carter?
Excuse me?
Submit that to the mayor. If you got three guys, submit that to the mayor ASAP. The mayor can, you, the mayor can go over the numbers of what y'all think the person should get or should have and send it over this stuff. Just submit it to the mayor, the, the, the mayor submitted to Mr. Turner, it comes, it comes to us. So if, if, you know, if you would agree, the mayor would agree, possibly the city council would be in agreements. I mean, we, we don't know what people have because we, like they say, we don't run day to day operations. So whatever they got, submit it to the mayor. I'm pretty sure, Mayor, you look at it, won't you?
That's what we're gonna do. Yes, yeah, yes, absolutely. And we did uh ask the employees, uh, what, a couple of months ago. Now, who wants to seek professional improvement, additional certification and so forth and so on. And we, and we got a list of, you know, we got a good list, um, and they also, a couple of them also. Call, you know, entertain, I encourage them to let me know if they're enthusiastic about it, you know, not just. And several people did call me and let me know they were enthusiastic about it, and that was very encouraging to me. And so now we need to uh, you know, put that in the budget in the form where they can be rewarded. Um, but yeah, I, I agree, I, the answer to the question, I agree with you.
And there, it, it, man, I, I remember, I, it used to be a dollar for every license that they got. Am I correct, Mr. Collier?
Yes, in Helena, yeah, it, it came up to a dollar.
And see, and see, the thing, Mayor, I, I would want us to look at to see how can, you know, cause we still call it Helena and West Helena. I, I think we need to get some structure on both sides. I mean, do we got one office manager? Do we got assistant office manager? You know, what do we have so we don't? Like with all those positions, those two positions, like Mr. Carter's position has not been filled. Uh, another person, uh, job has been filled. Tho- those are savings that we can talk about, uh, it's, it's some people in the water department, uh, in the office part, positions what I feel. Those are savings that we can be trying to say, okay, we, we, thi- this is what we got. We don't have to spend any, we don't, we don't have to spend any new money right now. We can use the money that was left. From these two positions, in, 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 spread it, spread it out, and keep twenty-five thousand dollars over here in case we had the overtime or something like that.
After we pass a budget, we can always go in and add to it and make changes like you're saying. And this is again, why we need for the heads of the departments and the mayor and. You, the treasurer, was the city attorney and all the department heads, get together and decide what you want. Uh, us to do and we can uh give it consideration. But we don't wanna micromanage each department or the heads of each department. So let's go ahead with the budget and we can make our changes as time goes on.
And Mr. State Columbia, I like what you just said. I really do about how we can go back and make changes throughout the year, right? It's, say that one more time so people can get what you just said.
We can make changes as time goes on as necessary and let, let them uh make their recommendations to it.
Right. Thank you, Mr. State Columbia. And, and see, and see, Mayor, that's what we were trying to tell you. We can always go back and make changes so that, that is, you know, throughout the year. So the whole blow we had the other night is, Mr. State Columbia just said it best, we can always go back and make changes. So I just wanna see everybody, let's get it moving.
Now, um, I just, I just want to point out that a few seconds ago, I was about to not let this moment pass. Cause you and I actually are in a unanimous agreement about the water department. Uh, but I think uh, I think they need to know that, that those, what you were talking about, the dollar for. Uh, certifications, that that incentive is there and it's already there. So if they do the work. Uh, and the money's appropriated, they're gonna get the, they're gonna get that reward. And that's exactly what we're trying to do with the water department. I think that's important really for all the positions because nobody wants to do the work and then be told they can't do it. One of our jobs is to make sure that the money is there and we carry out our commitment if, if we say we can do it. And in recent years, past years. Uh, we couldn't always say that and at least one occasion we had to what, cut back or. Reduce what we had promised or held out. Um, but we can afford that and we can especially afford that in the water department. And I think that that incentive is important and I think the, the, for the, for our u- water users, uh, most important people. Um, people who pay the bills, who send in the money, it's important for them to feel safe and that the waters. I mean, you, you just don't get much more basic than water and you wanna make sure and wanna know. That your department is being run by people who are gonna keep your water safe for you. And of course, we have state and federal agencies who have that job as well to make sure we're doing that. And we get fined heavily if we don't. And we are doing that, um, but we can do a better job of it and we can incentivize it for these employees. With the certification process and it's, it sounds to me, I mean, if I'm not hearing, I'm hearing incorrectly, tell me. That we're on one accord on this issue. And so Mr. Collier and. Mr. Valley, anybody else uh has suggested we need to meet, maybe we can make some of these changes before Tuesday. Or on Tuesday. We can certainly try.
Certainly, I think the only thing I would need to know is, okay, for each level of license, what is the appropriate uh. Merit for that license, what's appropriate financial uh value to that license?
Okay, let's move on.
Mr. Valley asked a question, I I was distracted by, so did you ask a question or something, Mr. Valley?
Oh, no, sir, I I just said that all all I need to know is, for each level of license, what is the financial value attached to that license? Uh, and that's, that's what, that's what all I stated.
Okay, well, I I can give you, I can give you that as far as the water department concerned.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody have anything in addition on water? Any additional questions, comments, concerns about water? If there be none, then we have covered all of the departments. Department by department, line by line. And the next step in the process would be for Mr. Turner to provide us with a um document that reflects all of the changes that have been made. Um, there's only one thing that I request, and that is that all of the itemized salaries be included into the budget itself.
As an addendum.
Yeah, I mean, as long, as long as, as long as it's one document, I just want it to be one document, okay, that that's fine with me. Mr. St. Columbus, you were saying something?
I I just want to say, I noticed, uh, the police chief on on here tonight. He wasn't on here last night and a week before, like to know if he has anything he'd like to say. Mike can bring it out now from the chief, he has anything to say. On behalf of the police department.
I don't see the police.
I thought he was on here tonight, okay.
I had this question, where are we with the human resource director? A department? Mayor, can somebody, you know, what what do they do about that?
Um, well, we haven't, we haven't acted on it, I still don't think we should fill it. I don't think we need to, we've been doing this for a few months now, and um, and it's, and it's working, so.
I I think it's a, and not to overstep you, Mr. Mayor, but I think at some point we need to get some human resource department. Uh, we got, we got some people that are qualified, I don't think we, you know, like I said earlier, I don't, I mean, this is just me. I think we get, we got qualified people, uh, uh, with degrees and stuff to can handle that department. We need, in case something happens, we 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 need a human resource director. What if somebody wants to a report a sexual assault or harassment, who would they go to? So I think we need to start, you know, trying to re- rethink that, because it's like in the, in the, in the fire department, who do they have to report to human resource? In the fi-in the police department, you have internal affairs, right? Internal affairs should be up under you, so that the, if they, if they got a case against the chief or somebody, they can come to you. And you know, you know their bias, you know, hey, this is what it is, but sanitation, street, landfill. They, if they decide to put it some personal term, all this should go to human resource. So, the the if we put all this on the department here, or or secretary or some, or payroll clerk or somebody, or 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 all that, it it puts a burden on somebody, so we need to try to, we got the the Mr. Martin, well, Mr. Martin was a human resource person, he's gone, that's a salary that we could fund somebody. You still got a lady back there that works back there, we need somebody in human resource to handle uh that, those issues, personnel issues.
Well, let me, let me say that, um, uh, within probably the first month after I took office, I administratively did just that with uh internal affairs, so that if there is a complaint anywhere in the city of Helen Weston, my employees, uh, or an allegation probably is another word, um, that rises to the, or that we're requested to look into. That that all of that be looked at by internal affairs, and if the, if the uh objection is about me, then I'm to be taken out of it, and the chief uh be the main person over that. If the objection is about the chief, then the chief is taken out of it, and and I'm obviously left uh, to to receive that report, but we did that, uh, not long after I came into office. Mr. Martin, um, well, I, let me just say it this way, um, I don't believe the city's always had a human resource director. And we have, uh, we have a lot of priorities, and the system that we've got now has been working really well. So, I I believe that position was created. I could be mistaken, but I believe it was created under Mr. Hollowell after he came into office. And, um, so we've, we've tried this for a few months, and I'd say, most, all of us, and I don't know of anybody in the city at all, on a day-to-day basis that thinks it's not going well.
But is it a, we we haven't approved that contract, though?
No, we hadn't, and I wish we would, I think it would go better in terms of, uh, especially in the future, when when uh, after next, in next year on the healthcare act. But, um, but I'd like to see us approve that, that contract, I sure would. But I don't think it, hiring a full-time position is is financially, um. I just, I don't think it, I think we can do it better the way we're doing it now, and I don't think, I know, we have been doing it better, the way we're doing it now. Having them would be helpful, uh, for sure, on a, on a more regular uh basis and that kind of thing, but, uh, but I think we can do it, we have been doing it, actually.
I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Turner, if he will, uh, get me a copy of the proposed budget as soon as possible, so we can have it Tuesday night, not wait till Monday night or Tuesday morning to send it to me. I'd like a a hard copy, one printed out, uh, where I can go over page by page, line by line, before we finally have our meeting.
Yeah, I'll try to get to you about tomorrow, sometime tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
How much are we spending for this hu- this human resource thing that you talked about? And I would like to see, this is just me, I would like to see a, a body in in there, because Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin did a good job, and I would like, I would like to see somebody back there, so folks can have somebody to go to if there's an issue, you know. Ain't charged important, because I I understand, I know a lot of other people, the the job that Mr. Martin did is substituted out. Ms. Hubbard does some, Mr. Turner does some, but then, you know, but you know, we're asking for raises for people, but you still gotta look at the money you go, the money you spend on this outside company could still be benefiting those people who live in Helena, in Phillips County area. I don't think you should just pass off responsibilities on everybody, and they not be compensated for it. I think we we can, we can use a human resource department, we can use that, because, you know, when it comes to people applying for a job, they gotta go see the front office, Mr. Turner or Ms. Hubbard, or somebody in the administration. And and they could be doing other things, but they gotta stop and send a person off for a drug test, do a background check, and all those things. So, I do believe that we need somebody here in the, in that office, where Mr. Martin's office used to be, back there, we need, well. I, Mr. Turner, I'll get with you tomorrow, I'm gonna get with the city, the members of the city council, ask them, what would be a a fair starting for, what was Mr. Martin's salary? Uh, what was that salary that in that, uh, department, Mr. Turner, how much was that?
I think approximately, I don't know exactly, but someone in the neighborhood, thirty-eight thousand.
Okay, okay, I I I'd like to see us, uh, use that thirty-eight thousand dollars for a human resource, uh, person. I I'll, I'll get with the other city council members, I'll get with them individually and see what their technical ideas, because we need somebody to run the department, and and you, we got a private person, right, Mr. Turner, is already back there, right?
She's full time.
Okay, so, so, you know, it'd always be somebody back there, if if you had a, a, the other full-time person, right?
I know she's on, she's like, uh, she's, she's full-time, everything else, someone, someone else taking care, some other aspect of the job.
So, okay, so I, uh, we need, we need to try to see, can we leave that in there? Uh, I I'll get with the mayor, but I want to talk to them, to them, and if everybody's been seeing what their feeling is on it. And I, and I get back with Mr. Turner then, the mayor, I'm not trying to overstep, but I just do think, before we set somebody outside of Helena West, I'm gonna try to see, see if we spend it locally, see if we got somebody locally in this city that wants to do that job. It's that that wouldn't make any sense that we, we're in a, we're in a pandemic, and, you know, folks want a job, or want to be promoted inside the city that has, has, has those qualifications, the fit as human resource director, we should be looking at them, or somebody outside uh, in this community who fit the criteria for that job.
Well, I, we've said this before, and I won't, uh, belabor it, but we did apply for the position. And the applications we got didn't meet the the requi-re requirements. But it required us to, or it it led us to examine whether we really needed it. Um, and although, uh, there's no question, uh, this is not about Mr. Martin, he he gave many years of of excellent service to the city. Um, but, you know, I'm trying to do what I've asked all of our department heads to do, which is to do more with less. And the fact is that, uh, the people you just mentioned a while ago already do, uh, a lot for us and deserve raises, and we can give those raises in for, it would be helpful to have an outside firm that does this for cities and specializes for cities, and actually uh, is the resource that advises the municipal even, uh, and in turn advises cities. But, um, and I think it'd be advisable to use them, we can do all that, uh, much cheaper than what we can do with fifty thousand dollars, because you gotta, you gotta look at city matching and and all the rest of that for that position. It's, it's a little bit more than just the stated salary. So, when we didn't get, uh, the applications that we thought, or the interest that we thought we would get, and we did advertise it, uh, quite a bit, then we, you know, we looked at it again, and thought, well, you know, we didn't used to have this, and maybe we can do it a different way. That's what we came up with, and at the end of the day, it's been working, it's been working really well.
Well, well, Mayor, I I I understand it, but you know, for a city has, uh, a larger city than we have, and I think that, you know, look at the raise that you're talking about giving people, it's still gonna balance out, if you, if you, the the proposed raises that you're asking for, it's the, it's gonna complete all the money that we, you said we could save, that's not true, because if you give somebody the amount of money that you're asking for, and give some, spread them, spread it out, you still spend the same amount of money. So I think we should, I think, uh, i-if if not, I I I consider what you're saying, but at least take what I'm saying to consideration. I mean, I I'm just gonna tell you like this, I mean, you know, I think we should have it, and I think it it's worth looking at too.
Um, I'm just trying to make the point that that's where we started out, was was that position, and we did advertise for it, and that was the plan originally. But we didn't get, we didn't get the interest that we thought we might get, and so we started looking at a different way to do it. And that different way has turned out to be, um, to work really well, so I I think the people doing that work, who were already really doing a lot of it anyway, uh, being given the appropriate, um, or and allow, and allowing, uh, that room in our budget for raises is is a better way to go for the administration of the city, and that's, you know, that comes from watching it every day. And, you know, getting input from everybody, it's not just my opinion, and also actual experience, because we've now been doing it this way for a few months. And of course, before the department was, was created years ago, we did it that way. And, um, so I think it's actually working really well. But we did start out with that, that idea, that's why we advertised.
Excuse me, can you tell me what the requirements are for that position? Hello?
Well, I'm trying to remember, what we asked for was, um, experience in in human resource development, and some of these work, and a few other things like that. So we had, we had people who certainly had skills, and there there was nothing wrong with the applicants themselves. Um, and it quite impressed in several ways, they just weren't, you know, they just didn't have the experience in the human resource, which built it.
And Mayor, I I, before Mr. Cracker tells me, Mayor, I'm just gonna tell you like this, I don't have anyone in line for this position. I just don't think, I'm concerned about, you know, somebody that's headed our business, that, you know, we don't even, you know, we haven't okay, if you decide to have my sister, somebody, my brother, it doesn't matter to me, I'm I'm not looking for anybody in the city job. I'm just saying that I feel like we have to, because I think Mrs. Flowers, if I'm not mistaken, she had, that's where it started, I think. So, I'm not trying to advocate for nobody's job, and the apps is who applies. Their qualifications speak well, I don't have nobody above for a job.
Okay, we through this, I got another question. Hello? Hello?
We hear you.
Uh, my question is, uh, for Ms. Rams, and Ms. Rams, did you find the paper that I asked you about?
No, ma'am, I didn't have time to go back to the office where I was.
Okay, and I think my question is, does anybody, because I don't remember doing it, but did we buy a truck today, Mayor?
Yes, we bought a code enforcement depart- uh, department truck, sure did. You know, so along with the water department trucks, we would have gotten the water department trucks today, but they, the ones that we picked out is already been sold by the time we tried to get them.
But what was the price range of the trucks?
The one we got today was about, I haven't seen the bill of sale, but I want to say it was around twenty-five, twenty-six thousand. Which is about the same.
Saying, and that's what I asked Ms. Rams to define, because I do not, uh, remember us approving a truck at that amount. So I'm wondering how was the truck bought if it had not been approved?
Well, it was approved.
Not, not at that amount, not at that amount.
Well, we approved three trucks, two trucks for the water department, one for code.
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir, we approved three trucks.
Listen, Mayor, I have a practical question, uh, excuse me, Ms. Crockett, just a second, I I know I'm interrupting you. Are you saying that that's the state contract price?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mr. Barry, yeah, well, that's what I was telling you.
Okay, I believe, uh, Ms. Crockett, to answer your question, I believe what you all voted on was not a specific amount. You all were told a several vehicles, and the authorization was the person that made the state contract price, so there was no You all were told a several vehicles, and the authorization was the person that made the state contract price, so there was no com- that compared to bidding, if, as long as they're purchased at the state contract amount.
No, sir, that is not, that, and I'm not, um, as I remember, I don't know, that the, that was done for the water department, there was a whole nother discussion about code.
I think Ms. Crockett, Ms. Crockett is right.
Was not, that was not included, if anybody remembers, he tried to get us to waive competitive bidding for code. And he, and Mr. Valley, you explained to me that just because, um, we approve that does not mean that he has to purchase the vehicle that we said, so the discussion died. There was never anything that was approved for competitive bidding or anything. And that's why I asked Ms. Ramsey to please find those minutes, because that truck has not been approved.
Well, let me, let me say that there have been many discussions about trucks over the last several months. And one of those discussions was about a specific vehicle that you had asked about. And that vehicle would have required us to waive bidding, because it was a used vehicle that not, was not on the state contract. And also, Mr. Collier at one point had picked out a few trucks that were in the same kind of situation, and they would have required bidding. So what we decided to do, and we made a motion to buy, not, not for, not the second code truck we were talking about, but the two water trucks that we were talking about, and the code truck. We made a motion to approve those three vehicles, and that they'd be on state contract, and thank you, Mr. Valley, for reminding me of that. Then later, we had a conversation about getting another code vehicle, and that was the used one, and would have required waiving the bidding, and then I believe you withdrew the motion, and we never, we never did that.
No, sir, we never talked about ever buying a new truck for code. So I don't know what, that's why I need to find my minutes.
No, you're welcome to, to go researching, but, but I recall it, so does everybody else down in the city, you know?
Well, uh, I was speaking in terms of, I was speaking in terms of the state contract. Uh, you all are discussing several vehicles, I'm not familiar with the actual purchase, but I do recall both of the discussions you all are talking about, and currently, they're both running together for me. But I do recall, uh, you all authorizing purchases of vehicles at state contract price. And I do recall there being one or two code enforcement trucks that were not approved, there was no competitive bidding, uh, done on it. Uh, I would have to review the minutes as well, uh, relating to it, since the two discussions are running together. But, uh, my question was simply, I asked the mayor, were these purchased at state contract? Uh, that's a separate and apart issue, because they would require bidding if it was purchased at state contract. But if the city council hadn't approved it, because it's over seventy-five hundred, it still would require council approval. And so we would have to look at those minutes, that's, that's, that's all, that was the basis, the genesis of my question abo- about it.
Well, I'll just tell you, the three trucks, uh, the three trucks were approved, provided they were on state contract. The additional.
That was three trucks for the water department, that had nothing to do with code. Mr. Collier, do you remember asking, how many trucks did you ask for? Because the code truck was a whole different thing, and it's, as always, and what the code enforcer needs was a twenty-seven thousand dollar truck. And it just, this doesn't make any sense.
I would, I would, I would suggest for Mr. Carter ans- answers, he, uh, th- this is really easily resolvable thing, either, either it happened or it didn't. And you, we can go back and not just look at the minutes, but we can look at the actual meeting nowadays and listen to it. Uh, but we, many months ago, approved two trucks for the water department, one for code on state contract. We later discussed a used vehicle, another used vehicle, a second vehicle for code. And when I pointed out it would have to waive bidding, and I might still not get it, because nobody's talked to me about picking out a car and some dealership, and it, and then you withdrew the motion, we never did waive bidding. And then we've also talked about truck, trucks for the fire department, the landfill. And I want to say, I'm forgetting something, oh, well, a vehicle, another vehicle for code, that would be on state contract.
Mayor, I don't know where you get your memory from, but not, we.
Well, we haven't.
A code, new truck for code just came up, when you said something about the landfill, and the one for the assistant chief for the fire department. Then something was sent out saying that the chief, the fire chief's truck was no longer running. But there hasn't, there was not a discussion about a new truck for, uh, code. So, uh, I don't know if, now you telling Mr. Collier, before he answers, he needs to, uh, think about it, was that some kind of random word? I know Mr. Collier came to us for three trucks. Now, Ms. Ramsey, I don't know if you remember or not, but do you remember, uh, us discussing a new truck for code? Ms. Ramsey, Mr. Turner, anybody? Mr. Elton, Mr. Franklin, I just do not, that was not part of it.
Ms. Crockett, I remember what you said, we did not, uh, because remember when the, when the, when the code enforcement truck came up, it came up for a used truck, and it was to be bought locally before, uh, the dealership beside the city, uh, closed down, or stopped selling cars. We did approve up to like eighty, ninety-five hundred dollars. Do, do, you remember that, Mr. Turner, where, where they answered, uh, the mayor was trying to get a car, because, uh, the, the second person in code was driving their own vehicle, and they said, well, uh, that's how, that's how the sanitation department got the old truck that he was driving, because they said if he fixed it, and Mr. Jones could get it fixed for his department, he could have it. So that left the guy, the second person in code to drive their own car, they would carry back about a car, uh, I think, we said, and we were, the mayor said, I, I don't see anything that I like, so we go, we just gave nine thousand dollars, so, Ms. Crockett, you're absolutely right. That's what I keep remembering, was that, I, I didn't do anything else about a car until the other day, when I got a text, and they said that, you know, put on the agenda for the other, uh, this past Tuesday, talk about, uh, some trucks for the water department, and an extra for, uh, the assistant chief for the fire department. That's what I remember.
Ms. Wanda, I want to, uh, put my, look, two cents in on it. Uh, we, I asked the, the city council, uh, for three trucks, I needed more than three trucks. And, uh, so I don't know where this two truck is coming from, and, uh, first of all, I, I, I talked with the mayor, if you can recall it, is that, uh, we, I had one truck that was totaled out in West Hill. They paid us part for them, you know, they paid for the total out on it. So I said, well, what, what we could do is take, go ahead and only get three trucks, and use the, the money that that was, that, that was the total out for the one truck, and it'll pay for, you know, uh, that, the third truck. So right now, I, I, I'm still, a, a, you know, at limbo, because I'm wondering why we just only get two trucks.
Well, let me just say that y'all are getting everything confused. Yeah, there's been discussion about three trucks with the water department, but the motion that night was about two trucks, two new trucks for the water department, one for code, and it was approved, as long as they're on state contract. We've got the claim.
You tell me what, when that was.
Ms. Wanda, if you're gonna let me, you, you want me to explain now, the truth is, all of this is in the record, so we're just wasting everybody's time. But there, as far as trucks go, there is a truck that was totaled, that we're, we've got insurance on it, will help us to, towards a third water truck. And we also had a truck, and I don't know the status of it right now, but if you remember, I brought this, that it would, been in the shop for a very long time, that belongs to the water department. And then finally, we've talked about, um, uh, getting a second vehicle for code, and that's a different conversation that y'all recall, that is accurate, but it's not the same conversation.
No, sir, we never had anything but about one vehicle for code.
And then we've talked about the fire department and the landfill, and none of those have been acted upon. But we would like, we would like for you to act upon them, so we can move forward. We tried to get the two water trucks today, but they're no longer on the state bid contract, because they were sold. So now we gotta find two others that are on state contract, that fit what Mr. Collier needs, and take the money from the claim, and see if we can use that towards the third truck as well. But, uh, because we would like him to have three trucks, and then we got the one issue about the vehicle truck that was in the shop for so long, um, North Hill. So, uh, there are a lot of issues about vehicles, and, and I think some of this is getting confused, but it doesn't matter, it's all in the record. Going forward, we still have to decide if you want to do another vehicle for code, and if you want to do a vehicle for the assistant fire chief and for the landfill. And.
Mayor, I have a question, well, I guess.
Wait, Mr. Franklin. No, it's all in the record as far as the past, we can find.
This, this, this is what I want to say, okay, Mayor, I'm talking now. This is, this is what I want to say, how is it so convenient that you're the only one on this conversation that remembers that? Ms. Ramsey has not said nothing, Mr. Turner has not said nothing, nobody else, you're the only somebody that could remember that. But there are two or three people on here that can remember that there was no discussion about a new truck for code. It's on, the only discussion we've had about a truck for code was one vehicle for code. We've never discussed anything about two vehicles for code. So I don't know where you're getting this information from, but I, yeah, and do you, since, since y'all went on approving, can you tell me when this was approved, so I can look at my, find my minutes, so I can look at it?
Ms. Ms. Crockett, you're the one who wants to prove a point, you go back and you get all the records you want, I'm convinced there, it either is.
Can I have the records from October?
Ms. Crockett, Ms. Crockett, you asked.
I'm not talking to you, Mayor, I'm not talking.
Now, you asked me a question.
Okay, you answered your question, so just be quiet, I'm talking now, you're not talking, you don't want me interrupting you, so don't interrupt me, please, don't interrupt me. Ms. Ramsey, can I please ask you to give me the minutes from September until now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Crockett, the records are.
Don't call my name no more.
I can do what I want, and you're not gonna tell me what to do. Now, listen, you can prove it or disprove it, the record is available.
You really believe that you can do anything you want, and that's why you do so much and think that you can get away with it. But, uh, this is not, this is not your city, this is a citizen, citizen city. So you need to stop thinking that you have control over anybody, because everybody on this thing is grown. So you need to act like we grown, and not try to act like we your children, and on that note, I'm gonna say, good night.
Well, I'll just say this, it works both ways, and when the record shows that's what happened, I'm not looking for the apology that I won't get.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just got this.
We had, we tried to have a civilized discussion tonight, but, you know, that works two ways, not just one. Yes, sir.
Well, well, Mayor, this is, this is all I gotta say. Mayor, now, I, I haven't missed too many meetings, I always get on the call and trying to see what's going on, but the last meeting I went here. But, Mr. Mayor, I do remember, uh, us approving one truck, and that was because this is what, this one was asked. It was asked that, okay, uh, how's the other truck? You said the other truck was fine. The other truck should have been in good condition, because it comes from the sanitation department, I think that was, uh, that, uh, now that was Ken Pratizy's truck. So that truck was in good condition, so we, you only said we needed one vehicle, and that was for the second person in code. And that's the only thing I voted on, Mayor, I don't know anything about this other truck. I do remember an email being sent out earlier this week stating that you wanted to get some trucks for, uh, the fire chief and, uh, the landfill, uh, deputy landfill director, and, uh, the water department. Mayor, now, I, I, I'm just telling you what I saw, I hadn't seen anything about code enforcement, and only code enforcement, person that needed a truck was the second person, so that's, I, I've never voted on anything but to get just one truck. So it, it, and, and like I said, if I did, if you did, if we did do it, like you just said, the truthful, show the truth. I'll come get a copy of the minutes, but I'm not saying you did nor, I'll say what I did vote on.
Last discussion that was had on the second code truck, I pointed out that we had a code vehicle, and the second code officer chose not to drive it. It was fixed, and the street department now has it. And Ms. Crockett is not on here, but, uh, at the time, said that she didn't know, but I'd said, I've said that for months and months and months. But at the end of the day, you know, he didn't want to drive it, so we, we gave it to the street department. Now, Ms. Crockett wants to get a new vehicle for that person in the code department. I have not fought it, uh, but it needs to be on state contract, and needs to have a warranty and that sort of thing. I mean, that's, that's, it is what it is, it's in the record. But going forward, we do need to discuss a truck, and, and that'll, that'll be whatever, it is what it is. So anybody who wants to prove something differently, they're, they're welcome, go get the record, some of that's online even. But in the meantime, the assistant fire truck, assistant, our team, major truck, the general manager, landfill major truck. That's still very much a live issue. Anyway, I won't, if nobody else wants to take that up, that wasn't on the agenda tonight, but, uh, I'll turn it over to anybody else who wants to, has a question, I guess, before we end it. Dawn, are we done, as far as you're concerned?
Dawn, I have a question or a comment. Uh, it's regarding the police, uh, department, and I was just wondering, could we not create a police reserve fund? And with that, we would have funds that are not allocated, or, and put them in there for new hires, promotions, uh, with the approval of the council, that money will be right there, if you need to hire five people, then if we, it will be right there in that fund. So what, what do you think about that? Would anybody, any of the other council members have any, uh, ideas or whatever? I'm, I'm trying to come up with suggestions.
Well, my suggestion, you do, you do what you approved and what you agreed to do six months ago, and leave promotions and the funding in there just like they are, so that we can advertise those things, and use it as we already have been doing, as part of the recruitment, and encourage the existing police officers. They're the ones in the promotion process, not, not people who aren't in the police department yet, people who are in there now, who have already, m- many of them have already gone through the process, part of this process. My recommendation continues to be that you restore the funding the way it was originally, and the way it was approved by the council six months ago, for those positions and those, uh, those promotions to build a professional police department. But I'm gonna be quiet, I don't want to take up any more time. Let other council members answer your questions.
Right.
I, I guess, to, to answer the original question, we've covered everything in the budget from end to end. If nobody has any other request of, um, changes or anything they want from Mr. Turner, uh, he's gonna prepare a finalized copy for us to take a look at prior to Tuesday, so that when we meet on Tuesday night, we'll be able to, um, vote up or down on it, or if anybody has any issues, they can, uh, get that to, uh, Ms. Ramsey, so she can disseminate that to everybody. And if we need to meet either before Tuesday or on Tuesday to discuss those issues, we can do so also. Again, we, it has to be adopted by, uh, February first. So as far as the budget process goes, we, we've just about completed it at this point, absent any changes or any issues that may arise between now and Tuesday. Um, Ms. Ford, to your que- question, the, the council is over money, so whatever we decide to do is what we decide to do in terms of appropriations. So, uh, if you want further clarification, Mr. Val is here, he's the city attorney, I never try to stand in his shoes, or step on his toes about that, so to the extent that I believe it's a legal question, I would defer to him as city attorney.
Just, uh, thank you for that, excuse me. Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Ford, I think you asked about a reserve fund. Excuse me, uh, when you say reserve fund, are you saying, uh, for, for monies that, that are, that are, that are already appropriated, what, what do you mean by the reserve fund?
Uh, what, there are positions that are not filled, or you're not going to fill them, and they hadn't been filled in six months, that this, these funds could still be there for the police department.
Okay, so what you're saying, so I understand, if we walk our way through it. Uh, the positions that are already there in two thousand twenty, or the position that you're there, what you're saying is create a reserve fund whereby most of Turner, and then the mayor and the city clerk would steal, whether the mayor hires the people or not, they would be paying the money to a, a fund, so the money would, would be there, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it was, it would be there. Yes, it was, it would be there for when, whenever they get ready to hire someone, or whenever they get ready to promote someone.
Okay, and so we would have to do that by ordinance. So as we talk this through, what you're saying is a reserve fund created. And so for instance, you asked Mr. Turner earlier tonight about what happens to money after appropriated, if not spent, and et cetera. And so my understanding, just, just listening to you, is that what you would want to do is for all positions that have not been filled by, by the mayor through whatever process, the money still be paid and is used exclusively for the police department, but it's sitting in the reserve fund. Is that what you're saying?
I mean, I, I, you know, each, each department could have an account, but I was, I was speaking specifically, uh, to, to the police department. You know, uh, on the spreadsheet or whatever, you never see what happens to the funds of a positions that went unfilled.
Okay.
I asked Mr. Turner that question.
Okay, I think that, to answer your question, I think that would be, be legal, uh, the practical, the practical ability about, I think you have referred to Mr. Turner on it. But the reserve fund, what, what you would be doing is you still would be funding the police department. And for what you're saying is that money would be set aside, wouldn't be used for any other purpose but the police that is put in that fund. And so what you're saying, that will prevent the administration from moving it to another line item or anything like that. That, for instance, Andre Val is hired the police department. When Andre Val is hired the police department, uh, if I quit, then, and they take six months to hire. The salaries still paid into a reserve fund until you hire somebody. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Or the other thing, if nobody's hired, we have all these positions. Because the discussions y'all have been having over the past few meetings about the police department and all these vacant positions, but the positions are not being filled in the practical matter of what happens to the money. Are we spending other places? What's been happening to all the unfilled positions and the money? And so what you're saying is, at all times, the money would be, be still paid as if the employee is there, but it's paid into a reserve fund for every unfilled position. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so in doing a reserve fund, what you're saying is you, okay, I'm, I'm thinking it through. So for instance, uh, in the discussion on, on the twelfth, we must definitely had discussion, there was thirty, thirty something positions, but we were less than fifteen positions.
Right.
Your position is that that money still should be paid, should have been being paid or accounted for and left in some fund outside, uh, where it's not touched by any other purpose, but it's left for the police department.
That's correct.
Okay, and so your question earlier, when you asked Mr. Turner about what happened to money in unfunded positions, that's what you're saying. So, uh, I guess what, if we did that, you'd have to divide every payroll period, you'd have to pay one twenty-six of unfunded positions and two of reserve fund for the police department. And what would be the purpose of the reserve fund?
Promotions, uh, if you need to hire someone, you know, for, for the needs of the police department. You know, if we're not, not filling these positions right now, put that money away, so it's still targeted for the police department.
Okay, and that will restrict the city from using any other purpose other than the police?
Yes.
Okay, and so in the event that, like now, we've been having these unfunded positions, the positions that have not been filled, you practically want the city to make sure that there, all that money is accounted for and placed in the police department's reserve fund?
Yes.
Okay. I can draft a order to say, I, I was trying to add for direction as to what, what it is that you specifically were saying. I guess the other question would be what happens? The practical question I would have, all of y'all have to think about too, if you're gonna do a reserve fund like that. Uh, first for Mr. Turner, is that practical for us to be able to do it? Uh, second, what would be restrictions on a reserve fund for the police department? Third, the question I would have, uh, about it, is when can funds from the reserve fund be spent? And on what, I know you're setting aside for the police department, but in drafting an ordinance, I, I would need to know how you.
Promotions, I mean, all they have to do is come to the council and say, I have two people that I'm going to promote to captain. Uh, this is what we need or whatever, and it's there. We can approve it.
Okay, so as a practical matter, as I'm going through this, what you're saying is the police fund will be fully funded at all times. So even when the positions are not, when the positions are vacant, the city is paying, it's just like the people are there. You're paying, I guess, in one twenty-six payrolls every two weeks, you're paying, paying, paying all those positions into a reserve fund?
I, 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 I would, I would, I, I would love that.
Okay. Now, what about the, the issue of overtime, would they, uh?
No, I, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't say overtime. I wouldn't say overtime, no. That, that, I mean, I wouldn't.
Uh, this, this is open for discussion, so I have a general idea what she's saying. Does anybody have any, any questions, comments, statements about, uh, Ms. Ford's comments?
Um, I, I guess I don't necessarily have any comments. I think I understand what she's saying. I mean, I'm not, Ms. Ford, I'm not opposed to it at all. I like just to kind of see the, the absolute details. Just get some general understanding so that I would be able to articulate it myself, how it actually works, but I'm interested.
Anyone else? Mayor, do you have any comments about, about that?
Well, again, I, I think it's better the way it was approved by the council six months ago, but, or the last several months. But I'll let you all work on it, and we'll see what, what you come up with. It's better than taking the money out, out of the department.
Well, the money hadn't been taken out of the department. I think the question that, that she's asking though is that, I must turn, I guess, this directed towards you. The money would be being spent, uh, at all times. So, so for instance, we've been achieving savings, and in part it's been because the positions are, are not filled. Is this practical, what, what we're talking about, Mr. Turner?
First, I'd like to add that I, I, I thought I answered the question, her question about the unused appropriations earlier. I mean, I think she fell off the line, but when, um, positions aren't fully funded, if someone leaves early or whatever, they're just not filled. Uh, those appropriations just are unused appropriations, and they, uh, so in the budget variance favorably, in your treasures report, you have actual expenditures. You have what we actually expended, and you have the budget, and that difference is the variance. And so if you don't spend those money, that, that money, if you don't make an expenditure for those appropriations, then those are just unused appropriations. And so they just show as a positive in your operating results. Uh, as far as the practicality of it, of doing this, it's no different than you, you still have to appropriate the funds. So if you have an unfilled position, if you have seven unfilled positions, that you appro, you have to appropriate the funds if you want to fill those positions. If you want to set a reserve fund for those unfair positions, you have to appropriate funds to create a reserve fund for the, uh, for the positions. Uh, and so actually, just by simply, simply appropriating funds in the budget, you're not expending funds. So you're not using actual cash. If you're gonna set up a reserve account, what you're doing is you're setting aside funds for positions that aren't filled. And you're restricting the city's use of those funds, so they can't use it for anything else. But you still have to appropriate the funds for the positions. You, you, you can't get into spend money to put it in another reserve account. You have to, you have to, uh, make appropriations.
Right, uh, I, I reached on that. You have to make the appropriation. I guess the practical question that, that's being asked, it would be as if you had the full department there. That's why I'm saying the practical, practical ability of it. Because you'd be paying the businesses at all time into the reserve fund. So actually, it would greatly strengthen the police department, uh, because you'd be funding, you'd be putting their reserve.
You wouldn't be funding anybody if you don't, if they're unfunded position. If you don't have a position that's filled, what are you setting money aside for?
That's a question from Ms. Ford, but what she's asking is for it all to be paid into a police reserve fund?
I think what she's saying, and I'm trying to make sure I understand, I think what her issue is, is okay, um, we got thirty-two positions in, in the budget. Let's say twenty twenty, fully funded, and you enter twenty twenty-one, and you only have twelve to fifteen officers. What happened to the positions that were never, what happened to the money? And the answer, as I understand it, or would believe it to be, is that, uh, the police department is paid from general funds. And so though that money never left general fund, so that's where it remained in general fund. So the police department doesn't have its own fund for which they're paid. It just comes from general funds. And so, Mr. Turner, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think.
Yeah, that's correct. I understand what she's saying is, if you appropriate some funds for positions, and those positions aren't filled, then those appropriations are just unused. That's the only way I can explain this, is appropriations that you did not use.
That, that's right, but, but she's trying to find out. He's saying, where did the money go? And the answer is it never left the general fund.
Well, yeah, the money was never spent, because if you didn't fill the positions, you didn't pay salaries, you didn't pay benefits, so you didn't spend any money.
Right, but what she's practically saying is, instead of it staying in the general fund, she wants to create a police reserve fund. Because as a practical matter, it's, it seems like our question is getting to that, okay, if you're not spending the money, what did the money, where did the money go? And we're talking about strengthening the police department, uh, we had all the positions, the fire department has, over the past two or three meetings, you've had people discussing, fire department got thirty-seven, police department got twelve, not, police department nineteen, et cetera. Okay, when we come time to fully fund the police department, you're getting all the people you have, where's the money to, to fund them and to make sure that they're there? And, and I think that's the basis. I can't speak for her. She can answer that herself, but I'm trying to think it through. It's, it's all laid on us at the same time, and so the question.
And in the past, a couple of years ago, that money went to paying old bills. The money that was the unfunded, the unfunded, the unfilled positions, you had a, uh, budget surplus, basically. So because those positions weren't filled, that allowed us to catch up. That allowed us to pay that, that what we called a box of bills.
And I don't have all the answers, and that's what I preference.
Yes, ma'am.
Asking about what, what should happen, or what, I want to make sure that the police have what they need. That's why I said the creation of a, a fund for them.
Yes, ma'am. Those, those are, that, that money, if it's unused, and, uh, it just sits in the bank. Like, we've been able to build up our surplus a little bit because of those, uh, because we haven't filled the position. So the last couple of years, we've been able to get our surplus levels up.
Hey, if I could interrupt just a minute and say this, and this might be, might not be a good place to end the evening, because it's after eight and then you're tired. First of all, I think you could set up a separate account, as Ms. Ford suggests, and put the three hundred forty thousand dollars in that account. And it might be a good place to stop and say that, that could be a template for a compromise between what my issues are and what the council is talking about. So that might not be a bad place to stop, and we can, we can discuss that, um, between now and, say, Tuesday, what that would look like, how that would work, and so forth. The second thing I want to say is that the public safety of the city, the positions for public safety in the city have never been used, um, to pay bills and that, and that kind of stuff. But Mr. Turner is exactly right. Most public entities and, and most entities have positions that are funded and not filled. And when I said, and I have said for two years, that we've got to do more with less, and the street department, and the sanitation department, and the street department have particularly done that, have done a lot of that. And so we have, um, that, and so we have two issues. We've had two issues. One is cash flow. And one is just total income and outgo, but it's not that simple. It's when the money comes in and when it goes out, and, and the biggest expense is payroll. So in non-public safety positions, it is true that if we don't fund all of them, there's more money in our cash flow to pay those bills. Mr. Turner's exactly right. That's one, that was that and many other ways, uh, the, getting our bills down, our costs down to run the city, not just payroll. But that was one way we were able to pay off all of our debts, and we ended up with a surplus. The public safety positions have never been really considered that way, because they're public safety positions. So those are different issues, but I kind of want to make that clear. But having said that, I think that's not a bad place to end, and maybe have a discussion between now and Tuesday, uh, as long as it's compliant with that for a while.
Everybody, boy, they input or whatever. Like I said again, I don't have all the answers. We talked about having incentives and things like that. I just want to make sure, I know that the police department doesn't generate income. So I'm trying to make sure that they have what they need in, uh, by means of promoting people, hiring people, maybe incentives, that type of thing. No, I don't have all the answers. That's why, uh, I called on my colleagues. So thank you to the ones that, uh, helped me with the idea. Hopefully, we can get something done for the police department.
Thank you. Well, I guess I kicked this off. Does everybody agree that it's a good place to start?
And we pick. I, I have one question. So, Ms. Ford, you asked me to, to get a rough draft for that for Tuesday. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, if you will, and if you need to call me or anything like that, you know, it's fine.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
So as long as we have, you know, for our legal discussions and meetings about between now and Tuesday, I'm okay with, uh, using that as a, as a starting place to talk about how, where we might end up, and I appreciate Ms. Ford's contribution. Is there anything else tonight from anybody before we adjourn for the evening? And, and I guess, Ms. Sandy, if you're still on here, so it was six o'clock next Tuesday, and it, it will be a regular city council meeting. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anything else? If not, is there a meaning to, I mean, a motion to adjourn? I'm not, I'm not even sure who else is still on here.
So, so move.
I'm making some motion. If there, to adjourn, if there's no objection, meeting is adjourned until Tuesday night. Mr. Valley, did you have something?
Oh, I was just saying, good night, Dan Boy.
Night, everybody.
Thank y'all.